How's it going?
Hello, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
Hey, what are you saying?
Is that all wrapped up?
Yeah.
Okay, give me a second. Just put a little candy bar in my mouth.
Yeah, I did. We don't share candy very well.
Alrighty. It is 1:30, seminar is scheduled to have a planning hearing. We've got four files, we have four files today. First one is AM 001021 and ZZ 0018-21. Second one is ZZ 0015-21. Third one is V 0010-21. And last but not least is VA 0014-21. And before we start, anybody that has, uses, let me try that again. If anybody needs help with visual or hearing impairment issues. You guys all hear what I just said? You don't have a problem with hearing. If you can see us, then, I'm sorry. Call for conflicts of interest. Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict.
Commissioner Conley has no conflict.
Commissioner Redshaw has no conflict.
Okay, and we're gonna, I'm not gonna bother summarizing the hearing procedures. They are up there on the, on the board. Maybe I will summarize them. Pretty simple. Staff starts, we'll give the applicant an opportunity, or the applicant's representative opportunity, to go ahead and provide their narrative. And then we'll go into public testimony. Starts up those supporting, those new to which there are hardly ever any, and, and then those in opposition. After that, the applicant has the right to rebut. And then we will close for public comment. And the commissioners will deliberate on each file. So with that, Spady, it's up to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Spady from Bonner County Planning Department. And we'll start with our first case, AM 001021 and ZZ 001821. This is a request for a comprehensive plan map amendment at a zone change for Voltsa Family Trust. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment from agriculture, forest land to rural residential land use designation. A zone change from agricultural forestry 20 district to rural 10 district. The parcel is generally located in Section 15 Township 56 North Range 5 West of Boise Meridian. The parcel is currently vacant. It is an unplanted property approximately 20.42 acres in size. It has access from county-owned and maintained Bodie Canyon Road. Majority of the site is characterized by slopes that are less than 15% downgrade, as you can see on this map. A small portion is, has slopes between 15 to 29% and still smaller portion has slopes that are over 30%. It does contain wetlands. It shows presence of streams and river intermittent. It does not contain any critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by local, state, or federal agencies. The site primarily consists of silt loam soil that is classified as well-drained prime farmland soil. Some other types of soils present on the site are classified as well-drained, not prime farmland soils. It is located within flood hazard zone X and it would not require any further flood plain review. The services available on site are individual well system, individual septic system. It has access to West Penoral Fire District, Northern Lights Utility District, Bonner School Number 83, and Bonner Co-Ambulance District. The current zoning on the property is agricultural forestry 20 and the current land use designation is agriculture forest land. Several public agencies were notified of this case on May 18, 2021. We received, the following agencies replied with no comments. Independent Highway District, Panhandle Hill District, Idaho Department of Fishing Game, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. And no other public agencies replied, no public comments perceived either. We'll proceed with our staff analysis for the comprehensive plan map amendment request from agriculture forest land to rural residential land use designation. The existing agriculture forest land use designation recognizes areas where steeper slopes prevail, 30% or greater. Transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available. And residential development challenges are present due to slope, poor soil conditions, hazard areas, and lack of police or fire services. The proposed comprehensive plan designation for rural residential recognizes areas that are, that provide for residential development where urban services are not available. Slops may vary up to 30%. These areas include hazard areas, critical wildlife habitats where lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposures to loss of property and lives. Small-scale agricultural uses and residential development are permitted in these zones. Majority of the site does not contain slopes that are, does not contain steep slopes that are 30% or greater and this criteria is suitable for rural residential land use designation. It is accessible by Bodie Canyon Road, a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. This makes the site suitable for both the current land use designation and the proposed land use designation. It consists of bonne silt loam soil that is classified as well-drained prime farmland soil. It makes the site suitable for rural residential land use designation as it will allow for small-scale agricultural uses along with some residential development. The other types of soil are, soils are classified as well-drained, not prime farmland soils. The site lacks access to urban water and sewer services. It makes the site suitable for both agriculture, it makes the site suitable for agriculture forest land use designation. It does not contain, it doesn't pose any residential development challenges due to poor soil, excessive slopes, hazard areas, and lack of police or fire services. The site is thus suitable for rural residential land use designation. The site does not contain any wildlife habitat areas as identified by local, state, or federal agencies. And the requested land use designation of rural residential remains appropriate on the site. We will now go over our staff analysis for the zone change request from agricultural forest, forestry 20 to rural 10. As per the code, AF20 areas should be designated as prime ag forest land in comprehensive plan. It is appropriate in areas that contain prime agricultural soils are characterized by agricultural or forestry users. And where one or more of the following apply, limited services characterized by slopes steeper than 30%, where access may be absent or limited to substandard road systems, or where large tracts of land may be devoted to ag forest production. As per the proposed zoning, as per the code for the proposed zoning, these areas are suitable or characterized by slopes that are steeper than 30%. Located within critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by federal, state, or local agencies. Contains prime agricultural soils served by a network of public and/or private roadways that generally do not meet the applicable roadway standards within the floodway containing limited access to public services. Site majorly consists of silt loam soil that is classified as well-drained prime farmland soil. It makes the site suitable for both the current and the proposed zoning. It contains no critical wildlife habitat areas as identified by any state, local, or federal agencies. This analysis supports both the current and the proposed zone. Majority of the site is characterized by slopes that are less than 30% downgrade. This analysis does not support either the proposed or the current zoning. It is accessed by Bodie Canyon Road, a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. However, neither AF20 nor ARTEN zoning requires a road system that meets the applicable roadway standards. This fact supports both the current and the proposed zoning. It is located within flood hazard zone X and it is not located within a floodway. It makes the site suitable for both the current and the proposed zoning. The site is served by individual well and septic system, West Penoral Fire District, Northern Lights Utility Company, Bonner School Number 83, and Co-Ambulance District. Thus, public access, public services to the site is not limited, making the site better suited for ARTEN zoning. With this, the staff concludes that the proposal is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. It is in accord with Title 12 of Bonner County Revised Code, the purpose of rural residential land use designation as well as rural 10 district zoning. With that, staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial with a vote of two is to one on July 1st, 2021. I can take any questions at this time.
The commissioners have any questions for staff? Nope. Okay. Dan, did you have a few words you want to say? Your words you want to say?
Dan Perval, project representative and project surveyor. As you have heard, staff thoroughly went through all of the provisions to see if this was approvable or to recommend approval. Very thoroughly and well done, and of course recommending approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as you can see, there were three votes. There was an issue on their understanding, two of them anyway, on the understanding of the prime soils. They got hung up on the prime soils. But the zoning that we are asking for allows for prime soils. So that kind of negates why they were disapproving or recommending denial. So the reason that we went through and we went, we're asking for rural residential because it matches the comp plan to the east and to the southeast. And it's all the same owner. We've got like-sized, we have five to 10 acre existing lots. And it is based on an R5 zone. That's the actual zoning is R5 also. So with the rural residential, as you can see there, off to the east. So we're trying to match that so that we didn't have mixed information in there. The proposed 20 acre break, you can see the extension of the county road runs on through, it continues off to the west through those several 20 acre pieces. That road would, would divide future 20s, 20 to the north, 20 to the south. The road would split them. There is a home on that site, and so it is a residential use. There is very little farmable land on that because of there's, there's some slight slopes, there's some wetlands in there, and there's small creek stream intermittent that runs through there. So it's more suitable to the rural res and also then the 10 acre zoning that we're requesting. Of course, we had no public comments, no resistance in the neighborhood. 11 agencies were handed out information. There was no comments on any of those. I see this as quite a simple project. And so if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions? Okay, so let's move on to public comment. Anyone, there was no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that's for, did you want to speak?
May I speak?
Make sure you.
My name is Claudia Carrier.
Claudia, you want to make, yeah, make sure you identify yourself for the record.
I'm Claudia Carrier. I'm a little concerned about wetlands and wildlife because I live next to one, and there's no proper representation from the fishing game or, you know, there's nobody representing the land or the few people that are out there. And so that's my concern is that I'm watching bulldozers come on Moose Habitat out of Morton Slough. So this is a different area, but I think it's very important to recognize and preserve the things that we all love in this area. I mean, there's very few rules and regulations, and I understand the people wanting to move here. But respect the few that are here. And I don't see any federal agencies representing the wildlife. So I don't see why permission should be given when I thought there was federal law stating that they need to represent. And they're not even here. Some cases, they're not even notified. Miles Banker was one of them, and he's watching the destruction on Morton Slough. So I hate to see wherever I go now that, you know, if I want to live in the city, I know where to go. We come out here for peace and enjoy this stuff. I, I see people want to make money, but there's more value to what we have than the money we'll spend and be gone, and then we won't have what we always cherish. In my area, they done something to the fish. We had perch coming out of the culvert. And there's, it's not there anymore. And I called the biologist, and they're adding an extra chromosome to sterilize these fish that because we look forward to. So that's just a warning. I'm sending alarm clock, and I'm not usually a public speaker. It's very hard for me to do it, so it's very serious too for me. So I hope you all consider about wildlife and getting the proper representation before you make decisions on this. Very crucial to the people who love this area.
So we, and for the record, we, it is routed to Idaho Fishing Game, who is the controlling authority over wildlife in Idaho, and they had no issues with it, so.
Well, that's, but if you look in, like the, if you look into the rules and regulations, federal law, because this is land of, Department of Land and Interior, federal, federal law. And they are supposed to represent. There's like four or five agencies. They're supposed to represent the wildlife, the wetlands, and nobody's being notified. The ones, if they are being notified, they're not even representing. They're not even showing up at the meeting.
Yeah, that's not something we can fix. We found that we can't tell the state or the federal to do.
It is something to consider. If they're not caring about the wildlife and, and the things that we value around here, then I, we need to make a complaint against them.
Okay, and this is a conversation that's outside of our authority, so.
Okay.
They were, but they were routed on June 22nd, and they had no comment.
Along with DEQ, US Fish and Wildlife, US Forestry Service, Army Corps Engineers in Portland, Army Corps Engineers in Hickory. They were all, they all had the information. We can't make them respond or, all we can do is give them the information.
Federal law, they're supposed to abide by. And they're not doing it, so they're breaching their, their.
And we have no authority, we have no authority over that, so.
Well, it is, to be acknowledged that they're not representing the people as they are the profits.
Probably should call a congressman or state senator. Did you want to speak, sir? If you could come to the mic and identify yourself for the record.
I'm Ron Spears. I didn't come here for this one, but my daughter lives at the end of that road. And he said, if I'm, pretty sure what he said, is it's not usable farmland. Well, there's at least 15 or 20 acres there that is hayfield that they do put up. And he says it's a county road maintained by the county, but I've never seen a county road plow that, or county, it's been done by private people. Well, I've seen it.
Yeah, we, we actually are, we terminate right just over the property line, on the subject property.
And the other thing.
Beyond that, it's not.
Right. And the other thing was the fire. Where's the fire truck's gonna turn around? It's a dead-end road.
Where do they turn around now?
They don't. Nobody's been called out there that I know of.
But I mean, you see what I'm saying. Where do they turn around now?
They don't. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, there's got to be a turnaround there somewhere to get these fire trucks out there and be able to turn around.
Yeah, typically, I've seen them, they turn around wherever they want, for the most part, so. Okay, any other public comment? All right, we have two online, okay. Go ahead and light them up. Who's first?
Susan, you should be able to talk now.
Susan, can you hear us? Susan, can you hear us? Is it on her end or is it on?
I'm not exactly sure.
Audio was tested prior.
Reg, you should be able to talk.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Yep, Reg Crawford, Standpoint Idaho. I would just like to point out that, I know the applicant pointed out that there wasn't any opposition to this, but this also was not run again, and legals or anything. There was no announcement about this being added to today's agenda. I also think it's a little bit of a exaggeration that the P and Z was mistaken in their, in their judgment or to deny this. It wasn't a small problem. It was a discussion that they took seriously. And I, you know, we have to respect what they did as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Reg. You get Susan. Susan, can you hear us?
Sure she can, she just can't comment.
Susan, do you have a microphone? What's showing a microphone for you? Just a little look. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Dan, we'll go ahead and, you want to go ahead and rebut?
Okay, I'm looking at the staff report. First page we're looking at, notice was provided in the mail, July 13th, published in the newspaper, July 13th, 2021. If y'all can look at your staff report, page two of 13. There's, there should be a photo aerial overview. Okay, as you can see, the area, the 20-plus acres that we are trying to rezone and comp plan change on, you can see the road running through the middle and heading to the west that runs to these other properties to the west. You can see a driveway right at the end of Bodie Canyon Public Road. That's a driveway and a home site there. As you look to the south of it, you can also now make out the green or grass. That would be the wetland area. So more addressing the comment that the wetlands aren't taken care of as part of the development permit, the building location permits process here with Bonner County. Those sites, those setbacks are all maintained. That's how they're protected at this level. Right now, we're doing a zone change, and that's all we're looking at is, does it meet the requirements for the comp plan change? As laid out, does the zone change itself? Does a comp plan change meet the requirements for that? This is a non-development, non-issue for going in and moving dirt and processing further along. That would have any kind of a chance to disturb anything out there. This is, this is merely a first step in the development phase and the building location permit process texts are sent out to look over the site to make sure that nothing is disturbed. It shouldn't be especially the wetlands. So that's being protected. And again, it was, the notice was all sent out. This entire program was sent out to 11 different agencies. They get the chance to review it. If they see it as a non-event, nothing for them to worry about, nothing for them to correct. They do not reply or write back, no reply. They take that opportunity at that time to see if there's any possibility of rules being broken. And to also see if anything that they should be taking care of should be their concern, and they would then address that. And then it would come back here in a, in a report. Again, the health department, they have their part in the development phase. Make sure drain fields are set back properly, the distance. They go and dig holes, check the soils. You have the road and bridge department. Idaho Department of Fishing Game, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. Army Corps in Coeur d'Alene and Newport. US Forest Service, US Fish and Game Wildlife Service. They all been notified, so at that point, they review that and they comment or no comment depending on what their review comes up with. I think that covered all the questions.
Alrighty, and what most people don't understand is just the first step. There's still layers of permitting that have to go beyond this. This is just the land split and the rezone portions. Milton has a comment?
You do.
Go ahead, Milton, can you hear us?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just think it's important to emphasize that, you know, these accusations that this was never published is false. The newspaper actually sends us a notarized affidavit certifying that, that that legal was published on that day. So just because folks don't see that in the newspaper, it's, it's been there. So just want to clarify that these things get out that are inaccurate, and people start to believe them, and, yeah, we, we just need to make the record clear.
Thanks, Milton. Glad to hear your voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed when DEQ or Fish and Wildlife Services have an issue with one of these, they're not reluctant to speak.
No, they're not shy.
They, they show right up.
Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and close public comment in this file, and we will move into deliberation. Yeah, I don't see an issue here. This is going from 20 to 10. It looks like the, the actual facts on the ground agree with the applicant. I, I can't find any problem with this.
I would agree. I, for it, you know, it's 20 to 10. I know the, the area, lived there my whole life. I don't think that, yeah, true. Up to this point, I don't think that this should be even a question. And it's a family split. They've owned it a long time. They should have that right.
And in defense of the applicant, he never said there was no available farming there. He just said there was a small amount that would lend itself to farm. I just want to clear that up. I think it fits with what's right there, so.
It doesn't mean it still can't be farmed.
Yeah, it could still be farmed.
Yeah. It's because you draw a line, don't mean you can't farm.
Okay.
The dirt don't care.
Okay, so with that, I will go and entertain a motion for approval then.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve project file AM 0010-21, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from a forest land 1020 to rural residential 510. requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from a forest land 1020 to rural residential 510 on 20.42 acres, partially and generally located in Section 15 Township 56 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact, conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, motion passes. Now the comprehensive plan map resolution adoption.
All right, I move to approve Resolution 2021-64, amending Bonner County projected land use map.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And now move on to the zone change.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the project file ZC 0018-21, requesting a zone change from agricultural forestry district 20 to AF 20, or AF 20 to rural 10 district on the 2.42 acres parcel generally located in Section 15 Township 56 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact, conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
And just directly, it was 20.42.
Oops, sorry.
Because it was 2.42, we wouldn't even be considering this.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is this roll call vote? Okay, roll call vote. It's not, okay. So then all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Now we go to the zone change ordinance motion.
All right, I move to approve an ordinance to Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned, citing its authority and providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by the reclassification of lands located in Section 15 Township 56 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho, from agricultural forestry district 20 AF 20 to rural 10 district R10. And providing for an effective date, I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And with that, we will go ahead and retire this file and move on to the next one. We're gonna go to ZC 0015-21. Staff may begin whenever they're ready.
Thank you, commissioners. We'll move on to our next file, ZC 001521. It is a zone change request from R10 to R5. And I'm Swati from Bonner County Planning Department, planning staff for the record. The applicant is requesting a zone change from rural 10 to rural 5. The property is located off Lake Shore Drive, fronting on Motten Slough in sections 15 and 16 Township 56 North, Range 3 West, Boise Meridian. The site is currently developed with a dwelling, three attached garages, three board a general purpose building, and a lean-to. It is unplatted approximately 10 acres in size. It is accessed off Lake Shore Drive, a public right-of-way. It is Bonner County-owned and maintained with treated gravel and a speed limit of 35 miles per hour. Most of the site does not contain slopes of over 15% as we can see in this map. There is a small portion of the site that contains slopes between 15 to 29%. It fronts on Motten Slough to the east and Penaral River to the south. It shows presence of excessively drained prime palm and soil. No critical wildlife habitat areas are present on the site. It is located within flood hazard zone X. A small portion is located within flood hazard zone area A. Site is currently developed with a well. The owner does not intend to make any further additions to this. It is served by individual septic and leach field system. Again, no additions would be made to that. It is served by Segal Fire District, Northern Lights Utility Company, Bonneys School Number 84, Bonneys Ambulance District, and Penaral Hospital District. The current zoning on the property is rural 10 and the land use designation is rural residential. Several public agencies were notified of this request on May 18, 2021. The following public agencies replied with no comments, Independent Highway District, Potney Pondry, Seward District, Penaral Hospital District, and Idaho Department of Fishing and Game. As per the as per the existing code, the R10 areas are characterized by slopes that are steeper than 30%, located within critical wildlife habitat areas. They prime agricultural soils served by a network of public or private roadways that generally do not meet the applicable roadway standards within floodways and containing limited access to public services. Our five areas are suitable for, for properties that are zoned as, that are, that have the rural residential land use designation or are developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acre density and do not meet the criteria for R10. As for the analysis, the site is in a, in an area that is designated for rural residential land uses by the comprehensive plan. Majority of the site does not contain slopes of over 15% and this analysis does not meet the criteria for R10 zoning. It does not contain critical wildlife habitat area as per any federal, state, or local agencies and it does not meet the requirement for R10 zoning. The site is served by Lake Shore Fired, Lake Shore Drive, a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. This road meets the applicable standards of public roads as provided in Title 2 of Bonner County Revised Code. This analysis does not meet the requirement for R10 zoning. Most of the site is within flood hazard zone X. A small portion of the site is adjacent to the Penaral River is within flood hazard zone area A. This analysis is, does not suffice the criteria for R10 zoning. Site has access to several public services, like direct access to Lake Shore Drive, Segal Fire District, Northern Lights Utility Company, Bonneys School Number 84, Bonneys Ambulance District, and Penaral Hospital District. Therefore, access to public services is not limited and it does not meet the criteria for R10 zoning. The adjacent area is developed with a density of approximately one dwelling unit per five acres of land and this analysis supports the R5 zoning. In addition to the site, not, not sufficing the requirements for R10 zoning, it surpasses the requirements for R5 zoning. With that, staff concludes that the proposal is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, Title 12 of Bonner County Revised Code, and Rural 5 District zoning. Staff recommends approval. Planning and zoning commission recommend a rule with a unanimous vote on June 17, 2021, and I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, the commissioners have any questions for Swati?
I have none.
None?
I have none as well. Is there an owner's representative or an owner here? Nope, okay. We will move forward with public comment. If anyone in favor of this proposal would like to speak. Are you none? Anyone neutral? Are you neutral?
Oh, no, I'm for or against.
That would make you neutral.
Hey, we finally got a neutral.
We finally got one.
Yep.
Do you want to make any comments since you're neutral? This will be interesting. We're gonna judge whether or not you're truly neutral, by the way. If you like, go ahead and approach the mic and identify yourself again. Even though you identified yourself earlier, you gotta do it for every file, so.
My name's Ron Spears. I believe a person should be able to do what they want with their land. Okay, I own a 33 acres across the county road from them and what it says here in Title 12 622, submerged of the land. We got in this discussion down at the planning and zoning and the fact was that there's one acre that is submerged. So it's not usable land. He says there's no intentions, right, though, to develop that land. But why, what's the purpose of dividing it then? So he wouldn't have two five acre pieces. He'd have one four acre piece and one five acre piece. But not even the five acre piece above it because his sewer goes out to the county road and it's, it's a long drain field. So whoever buys that piece is gonna have his drain field right in the middle of his property. So, you know, that's, that's one issue I got. The second issue is everybody around there has went 600, over 600 feet for water. The last guy that drilled across the road went 640, got three gallons a minute, he still got clean, he's water. So what's that gonna do with everybody else? What if I wanted to bust mine up into five acres? There's six more places. What's that gonna do to the water table there? The argument they had was, well, down the road, there's five acre pieces and they're getting lots of water. Well, that doesn't mean right here you're gonna get lots of water. Everybody there's going over 600 feet. So that's, that's the issues I've got with it. You know, if, if it's, if the codes are gonna apply to some, it's gotta apply to all.
Right, we're not taking that up. We don't have any authority over water. This is just about, you know, being able to split the land and those are some of the natural limiting factors that take place on a lot of properties. They can't perk or they don't get water, but that comes down the road. This is just the first, first phase. They still have to jump through those hoops regardless, so if they should develop it. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have any authority over water or sewer. I wish we had authority over sewer, but we don't.
But it would make sense not to bust it into five. He says there's no intention. Well, what would be the purpose of having to bust it down then? If he doesn't have the intentions to.
We don't question any applicant that comes in. I mean, it would be like if you came in and wanted to do something. We surely aren't going to say, what are your intentions and why would you want to do this? That's not our job. I mean, we're here, we're here to look at whether it meets our comp plan and, you know, and to me, this one absolutely could be zoned rec.
Right.
Because I mean, that's what a lot of the rest of these along here would be zoned as recreational.
Because of the proximity to the water.
So.
And there you can go down to.
You can go back to your comp plan and you can look at what it says and defines as rec property and this meets it. So I would say a five acre parcel is.
Or it wouldn't make five acres if one acre is underwater.
Again.
We can ask that question.
That's, that would come later.
Well.
If they wanted to try to develop it, then then that would be the next hurdle.
I think somebody can answer that question, but you don't sound neutral.
No.
You definitely sound against.
No. I'm just, I'm just saying that if there should be any problem if we bust mine into five acres then.
If you want to go for it, yeah.
It's a possibility.
You have, you have the right under Idaho law to, to request it.
To request it and try it and come through the process.
It's pretty rigorous. Listen to the file. I mean, the outline in the file basically says, yeah, it doesn't qualify under 10. It better fits as a five. And as Commissioner Conley said, it really should be rec. Would you get it down to 1,200 square foot parcels?
12,000.
12,000, excuse me, not 1,200, yeah. Now I'm doing the number thing. Yeah, 12,000 square.
I love correcting you since you did.
You can put a tiny on my 12,000 square.
Oh, we're gonna keep this rural. We're gonna be like Ratham Prairie. Just have.
Rural five acre designation is rural. Ratham is five.
Well, we're gonna have that if it keeps up.
Five and six houses per acre. This is potentially one house on five acres. Five acres is a rural designation. In fact, the designation is rural five. Rural's actually in the name.
Yeah.
Because we can differ on opinions of what rural is. We could say, well, for instance, I have 560 acres. So should everybody have to have 560 acres? That's my definition of rural. So if you don't have 560 acres, then what? You gotta leave? I mean, seriously, it's it's very shaded. So, okay, anyone wish to speak? Anybody else that's neutral? Or maybe not so neutral. How about opposed? How about opposed? You're not neutral. I already know you're not neutral. So go ahead. If you wish to speak, you are Claudia.
I am, but it's probably fruitless. My complaint is I just live right across the road from him.
Claudia, will you identify yourself again for the record?
Claudia Carrier. I live right across the road from Mr. McCorkle. They had problems with their water perking and they end up bringing it all the way out across, right up to the road, which I'm, my guardian is right across the road. I'm a little concerned about that. The, there's times, past years especially, not so this year, where that was like, I don't know, is it standing sewer water? I don't know, but the geese will go in there too. So I have a concern about that. You know, if there's some kind of weird thing going on, spread into the animals. This land does feed the water, the backwaters to the wildlife refuge and I'm very shocked they're not representing this property or the wildlife refuge, let's say that. But it is, it does feed the wildlife and I'm noticing a change out there, that's all I can say. So anyways, I'm still neutral.
So we're redefining the word neutral. And just to be clear again for you, Claudia, that we don't, we don't look at water and sewer. We don't regulate it. Well, we look at, is the land. That's all we're here to do. And again, if they, if they should choose to sell the other five or four or whatever, they're still, they're gonna have to go through a whole nother process. They're gonna have to go through a process for BLP. They'll have to get sewer, water, blah, blah, blah. So that's, that's the next hurdle. So, because I can tell you there's properties out there that they've done splits, come to find out the land is a perk. So it precludes any, any further development. So anyway, with that, any other public comment? Okay, who we have? George, can you hear us?
Yes.
Will you please identify yourself for the record?
George Garrick.
Okay, and you may, go ahead.
I would like to know how quickly the staff attorney should reply to written requests. I had sent an email to Mr. Wilson on August the 5th asking him about the 2002 critical habitat map. I asked him to tell me who paid for it, who produced it, how often these maps are typically updated, which species are mapped? Does the county even track the Idaho fishing game threatened endangered species? And how does this compare to other counties in the state? For example, how many other counties use such an obviously outdated map in their decision-making process? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and George, again, we don't deal with fish or wildlife. That's other agencies, state or federal. So that's not something, but if the attorney has not responded to you, did you do it? If you did a documentary request, you should, you do a formal documentary request because then he should respond to you and if not, let us know and we can hopefully help make that happen.
So, Mr. McDonald, are you saying that the county commissioners didn't create the habitat, critical habitat map in 2002?
I would bet no, because we're not qualified to create critical habitat maps as county commissioners. It's outside of our authority. That would be fishing game or the national wildlife.
But, but you were like, the planning and zoning relies on a map that's almost 20 years old. How, how's that possible?
Well, because that's what we've been given. Again, we don't control that. We don't create those maps. That's not within our authority.
So it's, so, so you don't think that that map needs to be desperately updated so that the the planning and zoning board has up-to-date information on?
Again, all these agencies are routed with every file that we do of this nature. And if they believe that the map is problematic, then they would comment and say so. Trust me, they're not shy about commenting.
I guess what shortfalls do you see on the map? Is there something specific that you believe that the map is lacking in? Because I mean, I could pick up the phone and say, boy, we've got some concerns about certain things, but you're being pretty vague about, just because of the 20-year span, doesn't mean it isn't valid. I, I, I find that frankly shocking that you would say that. And, and my, I guess my follow-up question is, do you know the species that are state-ranked S1 through 3?
No, because that's not under our authority. If it were under our authority, we would know it.
Well, Mr. McDonald, I, I find this to be a circular argument and it's something that I plan to pursue in the future. So thank you.
Good. All right. Have a good day. Wilson? Reg, can you hear us?
Yes, I had my hand raised erroneously. Sorry about that. Thank you anyway.
All right. Thanks, Reg. Okay, any other public comment while we're here? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close, or actually we'll give, well, we don't have the owners here to represent, so we'll go ahead and close for public comment. There's no rebuttal. We will go ahead and deliberate. Yeah, this looks like a slam dunk.
Almost.
Yeah, almost.
Swati, can you pull up that flat?
Why can you pull up that flat and show me the acreage sizes that border it?
Does Milton want to speak? Does Milton want to speak or is he just?
Hi, Milton.
No, that that conversation, I've been consulting with Bill on that conversation and so um, it it'll be a little while before Bill's able to respond to them, but yeah, it's a it's just something that we're working on in the comp plan to get it updated. As we update the comprehensive plan, it's the planning commission's responsibility and they'll they'll uh, they'll address this as we move forward. It's on there, agenda.
By the way, Milton, you didn't identify yourself at the record. Just saying.
That's good.
The other question I have is the submerged land.
Did we get Commissioner Bradshaw's?
Yes.
Question answer.
Yes, I'm I'm.
Okay. Well, do you have any comment on submerged land on the one acre of submerged?
So the the subdivision ordinance says that you can't count submerged lands towards density. And so, so it does make it technically a nine acre parcel for division. So it would require a a further review by the applicant either probably apply for administrative variance or something like that in order to get that done.
So we would say it's all right to go forward. But yeah, you would, they would have to go through the hoops you're talking about to actually get it done.
Yeah, that's correct. And and we would analyze it further at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a five?
That's now three.
That's how much, how big?
Three point five.
Three point five nine.
That's only a three and a half acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says both north and east of it.
I was just checking. I know his is is a lot bigger and I know the one on the other side of the bay is bigger.
How big is that one? Three?
Two point four nine.
Two point four nine?
Yeah. And because I built.
Just straight.
And they will have perk issue if they don't get out by the road, so.
Seven point one five.
Yeah, I think if you got your question answered.
I got mine answered, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that those weren't all pins.
Okay. Any other deliberation we need to have? I mean, the evidence in our in our comp plan um, seem to agree with the applicant's request, so. What's your comment?
No, I did just to try to, for the folks that are, you know, come in and to try for them to try to understand that this is just the permission to go forward with a zone change uh, or a zone change application. So this is just to do the paperwork upfront. So then they have to go through all those issues. When they get a building location permit, there's a whole nother layer of issues that they have to go through and meet. So it's not like this just allows, you know, this to happen. There's there's multiple layers.
Allows you to start.
This is the first layer, well, second layer after planning and zoning.
Okay, well, if there are no other uh, comments, we can go ahead and close deliberation and all enter kind of motion.
I move to approve project file Z C zero zero one five dash two one requesting a zone change from R ten to R five on ten acres of unplanted land located off Lake Shore Drive in section fifteen and sixteen of township fifty six north range three west Boise Meridian Idaho. Finding that it is in accord with general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to recommend adoption of the following findings and facts, conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Our second to motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now the zone change ordinance.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing for an amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by reef classification of lands located in section fifteen and sixteen township fifty six north range three west Boise Meridian, Bonner County Idaho from R ten to R five and providing for an effective date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official supplementary zoning map upon publication of the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Roll call, but. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, ma'am. Okay, motion passes and we will retire that file and move on to file V zero zero one zero dash two one.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Daniel Britt, planning staff for the record. This file is for reduced setback variance. The applicant is requesting a reduced setback from ten feet with twenty five feet is required to allow for the construction of her single family dwelling. Property is currently developed with a building site, an individual well that were in place at the time of purchase by the applicant. The properties in the vicinity are being used as a resident residents. Slopes on the property range anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent grade and the current zoning is R five. Little background on the site we're talking about this afternoon. It is a residential lot that's platted. There's five point eight acres on it. It is zone rural five and the land use designation is rural five. Primary access is off Duffer Row, which is a county paved maintained road. Um, onto Morning Star Mountain Road and then onto Living Springs, which are both gravel roads. Plated subdivision. As already mentioned, there is slopes on the property. It does not contain any mapped wetlands. There are no river streams on the property and there is no flood plain. There's an individual well that's currently on the property. There's no septic currently, but that is how we serve. Pursuit's disposal. Within the West Ponderay Fire District, Northern Lights is the utility company is within the Bonner School District eighty three. Slide to the picture to the left is site plan provided by the applicant. The exploded view there is what they're asking for the variance for, that small section of the garage. Setback. Shot of the portion of the home.
What's that distance from the corner to the property line?
That's the ten foot setback they're asking for.
The red dotted is the twenty five foot?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So these are the standards for the variance. A, the conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topo or the other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. B, special conditions and circumstances do not result in the actions of the applicant. And C, the granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest in that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. So the conditions that apply to the property, they do not apply to general generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topo or the other circumstances which applicant has no control. So applicant responded to that criteria with the access road and the building pad are already prepared. In addition, well and power are already installed to the building pad. Hillside lot is fairly steep. The optimal building site was prepared previously based on site constraints. Well, location limits the location and width of the residence. Variants would allow for the new owner to build a planned home. Staff, based on site visit, applicant does not have any control of the slope of the lot and the previous owner had developed the pad and installed the well prior to the purchase of the new owner. This is information of environmental features on the property that were pulled from our mapping system. The dark orange indicates the thirty percent or greater slope and the yellow is fifteen to twenty nine percent. They can see the entire lot is covered in slope. The other lots in the vicinity um, typically have benches here that are all developed or built on those home sites. These sites we're looking at here on the right hand side of the screen um, are undeveloped currently. So special conditions and circumstances do not result from the applicant's actions. roadway, building pad were installed prior ownership. Staff agrees with that. The property has a naturally steep slope and the previous owner installed a building pad and well. So this is an aerial site from twenty nineteen. This is the building path that we're taking a question here. Currently, this is their driveway. These are aerial views from the east, the north and the west indicating the site. These are on the ground photos, one that says the slope that this is coming up their driveway. You can see kind of the steepness of that slope there. I apologize for that. And then the, this is the building pad looking in the middle at a westernly, the southwestern portion of the building pad and then the far right photo right there on the horizon where the you can see the river. That is the slope on the property. That's the edge of the building pad. And then it drops off dramatically. There's an aerial sight looking from the north to the south. Um, this once again is the path. This is the steep slope. Sorry, the mouse is working there. Um, just below that red arrow is where it slopes off dramatically. So granting the variance is not in conflict with public interest in that it will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. So staff agrees with that. The applicant, uh, the side yard adjacent property owner to the north is already built on their lot. Existing trees, the vegetation are well established and they're dense enough to provide a hundred percent site obstruction from the proposed home. Reduce setback would not adversely affect the parcel to the north as is currently developed. Proposed houses situated so that there will be no headlights shining into the northern twenty acres. It is in line with our comprehensive plan to allow people to develop in the rural residential area um, on slopes that are very up to thirty percent. These are the agencies that commented with no comment. We received one public comment to the proximity of the home would be too close to the property lines. So in conclusion, conditions to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topo or the other circumstances of which the applicant has no control. Two, special circumstances. Special conditions and circumstances do not result in the actions of the applicant. And three, the granting the variance is not in conflict with the public interest and it will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. Staff recommended approval, P and Z recommended denial. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Gentlemen?
No. Sitting there puzzling why they recommend it did not.
Yeah, me too. What's with the condition of the?
I'm sure the applicant's representative applicant can speak to that after here.
Um, applicant? Please identify yourself for the record.
Brian Phobes with foresight engineering applicant representative. Also the engineer site plan, uh, engineer of the site plan for the site. My recollection of the P and Z hearing was, and if if you have the the hearing are able to pull up the the video of it at one hour, nine minutes and eleven seconds will tell you exactly why. They denied it and I can save you pulling it up, but essentially it was they don't want to set a precedence and they'd rather you guys approve it than them approve.
Oh, yeah, I read that.
So it's on the record. It's at one hour, nine minutes and eleven seconds. If you're interested in hearing it. So I agree with staff. I thought they had a thoughtful report. Um, the site does have some some constraints that were outside of the realm of the applicant. A little history, just for your own knowledge, is the 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 current owner uh, went under contract with a thirty day closing mid February. Uh, they closed mid March. He had in his mind and had purchased a house plan which he thought would work based on his knowledge. The northern line was somewhat misrepresented by the by someone along the sale process. Once he purchased it, we topoed the lot. We found the pins that established that northern line. It was on the order of probably ten to twenty feet misrepresented, but the pins were there. It's kind of obvious. Once you have the pins. And then the wells installed, the powers installed and what you don't see on that relief map is there's actually a nose that kind of comes down that's steeper. That's to the left of that red arrow you're looking at. So moving the house south has significant challenges with respect to existing utilities, building on a slope, so on and so forth. So we think that the the variance or agree that the variances meets the conditions for approval. And we laid out the garage and whatnot, so that would be essentially, we're asking for two to three hundred square feet of house footprint variance. And that's to the drip line of a two foot overhang. It's not. So the foundation line is probably on the order of three feet closer than that, so. In all reality, yes, from, you know, putting myself in the perspective of the property to the north, that is dense trees dividing us. The garage is going to divide any headlights shining my way. I don't really see a negative impact to the property owner to the north.
Not going to block anybody.
Yeah, I was looking at the topographical notes here and it looks like, yeah. Pretty steep around there.
So in short, he he purchased a lot with a short timeframe, got better optics on where the property lines are, what's the buildable site is, where the well is and overlaid the house plan and and then that's how we got to being here today. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the owners representative?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Seeing none, how about neutral? I'm not counting you. We know we know both you guys aren't neutral.
They want to be. They just.
So difficult. Uh, is there anyone opposed? We haven't been online? Nobody? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment. You know, we run into this on occasion where where the uh, where the actual site does create some some issues and and especially with the topographical features on here, I can see where the issues are. Where this, where the pad not built, utilities already run, it would probably be easier course to say no, you know, make your building smaller. Sounds like this person is kind of in a tough spot. I do like the fact that based on what we're able to see in the photos, there's a, there is a solid and densely wooded buffer, so it won't affect the neighbor. Um, so I would be inclined to approve this.
Yeah, and I I hundred percent agree with everything you just said, which is unusual, but we'll do the best we can.
Someone mark this down.
The fact of the matter is, is to me, this is not gonna uh, affect the northern league property owner at all. Um, this is just a a small variance of and and something to what I think makes more sense. You've already got a building pad. Do you really want to go up there and start excavating around or you just want to use what's there and uh, make the best of it?
Yeah, especially utilities already running. What's your Bradshaw?
Yeah, I think it's the right thing to do. Because of the slope and topography, it's not certainly not going to block anybody view into anything uh, not going to be detrimental to anybody blowing. I think more excavation would be more detrimental than the variance.
Well, no, we'll go ahead and close deliberation. Anybody got a motion they want to put forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this file D zero zero one zero dash twenty-one. A reduced setback or a ten-foot setback where twenty-five-foot setback is required, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law, based upon the evidence submitted upon the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the following findings of fact, conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Here we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Delayed reaction there?
Yeah. Motion carries. With that, we will go ahead and close this file and move on to file B A zero zero one four dash two one.
Mr. Chairman, I need to
Need a break?
Excuse myself because I have to go to the dentist with
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure which is worse.
We can do that for
This is about equal footing between this and the dentist. Actually, if he's gonna drill on you, then this is probably about the same.
I'm not sure, so it's
Jesse's got a little toolkit.
Yeah, we can do that right here. Okay, so we will go ahead and excuse Mr. Conley for this.
Exactly.
There you go.
Flip a coin.
They got some tools by the elevator.
Yeah, no kidding. Air hammer in there too.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Sorry.
And you're a logger. You cowboy up. You don't need no pavement.
Okay, so whenever staff's ready, you may proceed. This your rookie presentation?
This is my rookie presentation.
Usually when you're looking with your rookie presentation.
I know, I have to have
Certain amount of ribbing that will go along with this.
Yeah.
Humiliation.
I'm open to. I'm open to.
Yeah, we haven't got to say no yet, so you've been like a good sale here.
You just get made Jeremy nervous.
Commissioners, Tyson Lewis, Planning Department.
Okay.
This file is B A zero zero one four dash two one and administrative variance. As a prerequisite, this was approved. We're just here to do a reconsideration of what the original bulk was that we're approving thirty percent on. So the previous building is twelve-three-four-four non-conforming structure, twenty-three feet from the shoreline. So code says any replacement building would have to be one of the following, or it would require variance. The replacement building would have to meet current code by maintaining a forty-foot shoreline setback, or the replacement building could stay at the twenty-three feet from the shoreline, but its bulk would have to be reduced. That's what code says, but anything outside of that would require a variance of some sort. Full variance, you get more than thirty percent. Administrative variance, you only get thirty percent. So, yeah. The applicant request building, or a building that is larger in the bulk than the original and an administrative, an administrative variance was sought for maximum thirty percent increase from the bulk of the original structure. So this appeal is a reconsideration of what that original bulk was. The property is located on the, at the eastern shore of Priest Lake, an all-way lake lots. Here is a picture of the building on the left provided by the applicant and on the right is the assessor's sketch, part of which I based my square footage calculation on. This was my initial, or staff's initial interpretation of the character of the building as being a step design where top floors ten by twenty-four, bottom with the deck coverage roughly ten by twenty-four, placed on a slope. This is a picture that we just got this morning from one of our compliance guys that found it on our Realtor site that shows kind of the character of the building from the lakeside. You can see that there's a daylight area at the bottom that's set closer to the lake and up top, the ten-by-twenty-four cabin. The area in question is directly below that, where you see this, this was the interpretation that came in after the fact, or we're trying to determine directly below that ten-by-twenty-four cabin, whether there was a open area below it, as you can see by the pictures. It's a little hard to determine. So the applicant is submitting for E L P two twenty-two-one oh one oh one was kind of the instigation for the variance. The original proposal was for a three-story building that's seventeen-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet roughly. But if the original bulk was smaller, it wouldn't accommodate that with thirty percent. So in the application, it says, this is a snippet, that the old accessory structure was roughly five hundred square, five hundred forty square feet, not including the deck. So I threw in here some bulk regulations. Bulk also includes height and floor area ratios. Since we didn't have any measurements of the height, I had to kind of, staff had to go off of what floor area ratios were. So the proposed structure in B L P oh one oh one is thirty-five feet, all three fours. The approval that staff came to the conclusion of was six hundred and forty-four square feet of floor area within the shoreline setback. So the original building, staff's determination was that it was four hundred and eighty square feet, add thirty percent, you get six hundred and forty-four. But outside of the forty-foot setback, the applicant has the option to build as high as they wish or as large as they wish. The administrative variance is only for that first seventeen feet of the building that's within the shoreline setback. These are just a couple of calculations that kind of came back. As you can see, it was a little difficult to determine what the original bulk was, because there was a lot of numbers thrown around, trying to determine exactly how big it was. Staff is happy to grant whatever the applicant needs were solution-based, but we couldn't really come to a conclusion of exactly how large the building was. So this is the most recent email that instigates the appeal. So the cabin main floor, ten by twenty-four, that goes with the assessor records, two hundred and forty square feet. Cabin ground floor, ten by twenty-four roughly, two hundred and forty square feet, and the enclosed low-deck area of nine by sixteen, so that's a hundred and forty-four. Bringing the total existing to six hundred and twenty-four square feet. Applicants asking for thirty percent on top of that, eight hundred and eleven total square feet. So I just put a little note at the bottom, not all the square footage is inside the forty-foot shoreline setback and is therefore not subject to the bulk calculation for the administrative variance. This is a little visualization of the forty-foot setback placed on the building. Staff never saw the building in person. It's difficult to come to a concrete conclusion of where that line was, but a rough interpretation. So this is a representation of the building that was proposed in B L P twenty-two-one oh one oh one to accommodate off-street parking. You can see there the gap between the person and the driveway, where the top floor would be and where you'd be able to pull a car in, providing off-street parking, which is always desirable. This is pictures of the site currently from when staff posted the appeal posting. This is what it looks like currently. Can't tell exactly what was there, so there's no
We're not talking about that structure in the background, right?
No, 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 that is the main house. No, this, this sloped area here that goes down to the water is where the existing non-conforming structure was. So it, it makes it impossible to really determine without seeing it, how big it actually was, or the character of the area below the cabin. So some alternative solutions and approaches for accommodating what the applicant wants. You know, the property's got thirty percent or greater slope on the eastern half, and neighboring properties also have similar slope percentages. It's not constrained in size, which prevent building and accessory building elsewhere on the property. The complications involved become financial, not because of physical constraint. There's, there's more room. There's just slope that you would have to contend with more excavation, but said excavation would be further from the shoreline. So the eastern portion of the property is approximately point four-nine acres and does not currently have any structures on it. And the property directly to the south is subject property, has an approved building location permit for a single-family dwelling, placed on a similar slope as the next illustration will show. You can see there on the right, new construction going on. You can see the contour lines. The interval is fairly consistent. The bench that the new house is being put on appears to have been excavated to make it flatter, to accommodate a single-family dwelling. On the bottom left, you can see in the aerial image, the existing building that is no longer there, that's in question, that we're trying to come to a conclusion on how big it actually was. So staff's justification for the decision is there's no evidence submitted to confirm there is a space below. We had a single picture inside of the walk-in to show the area underneath was open. We could add that to the total floor space, the floor area ratio. On that original B L P, it was noted that variance, or as, as it was drawn, it would require variance to be approved due to the increase in height and bulk within the forty-foot setback. So an administrative variance only accommodates thirty percent, where a full variance may be able to support both deviation if it's over the thirty percent. Hard to determine what thirty percent is if you don't know exactly how big the original was. Bulk is complicated because it involves height, floor area, impervious surface area. There's, there's a lot that goes into the calculation that requires some pretty specific numbers. So
We have a, we have an idea of how big the original was.
Yes.
You have the photos you could
Yeah.
Wonder how far over the thirty we're looking at.
Yeah. So, you know, based on the applicant submitted pictures in conjunction with the assessor photos and sketches, you know, determining the square footage within the forty-foot shoreline setback is murky, it's best and inconclusive at worst. Staff finding there was four hundred and eighty square feet inside the shoreline setback was based on comparing and averaging all the information provided and found by the assessor's office records. B L P twenty-two-one oh one oh one is unambiguously representing more than thirty percent bulk increase inside the forty-foot shoreline setback, just based on submitted illustrations and dimensions on said illustrations. Although the exact amount of increase is not possible without, without exact measurements, the original structure's bold. So existing structure has been removed. There's no proof of concept possible without more evidence.
So the one they're going back with, or proposed to go back with, is larger, but is, is any closer to the water than the previous?
No. Twenty-three feet.
Still twenty, still be twenty-three feet.
Despite these, are these, these must be old lease lots, state lease lots?
Yes, yeah, the original person
There's quite a few, there's quite a few houses that are right down almost on the water.
In the picture a while ago, you can see
Yeah, the ones
To the left and the right, we're like
Yeah.
If it rains a lot, they'd be in the water.
Okay. You have any questions for staff?
Any heckling?
You know, we're gonna take it easy today. We'll get you later.
Okay.
You, you catch us later in the afternoon and it, yeah, our resistance goes down dramatically. Okay, so owner's representative.
Jeannie, do you know how to pull up the thumb drive on here? Oh, Swatty's the pro.
You'll take a Swatty at it.
Yeah.
Not bad, by the way. Lot of math over this thing in the afternoon.
Thanks, Commissioners. Jeremy Grimm from Whiskey Rock Planning. I'm here today to help Mr. Burke on this challenging situation and hats off to Tyson and the planning staff. They, they were really accommodating and trying to get us to this just ended up being a situation where after the approval of the variance, administrative variance was given, there's a conflict with the signs and the plan because that original square footage, we couldn't come to agreement of what that was. And part of that is because the structure's no longer there, so it does make it a lot more difficult. So we are here today to try to, you know, clarify some of that. And again, pretty odd that we're appealing an approved administrative variance, but hopefully I can get our point across here. So originally approved back in June, and the thing that we're really taking issue or would love you to consider here is the existing non-conforming structure size. As Tyson mentioned, it's four hundred and eighty square feet. But visiting Mr. Burke and looking at some of the historical figures here, what we're asking is Board of County Commissioners to recognize the pre-existing non-conforming enclosed area of nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet, based on the photo evidence that we're, we're providing here. So when we look at what evidence Tyson used in, you know, calculating the original approval, you'll see that maybe you can see, it says no lower down here and, you know, obviously the structure wasn't there because it was destroyed at no fault of the owners. But Tyson did his best based on what he had, and we were able to go back and get some additional historical photo evidence here. And what you'll see is photo on the left is the enclosed area under the deck that Mr. Burke purchased the property with. And then the photo on the right there is the enclosed area under the, the main structure. And what Tyson went, went based off of was the assessor's data. And you'll see this arrow to left there shows this accessory structure, twenty-four by ten with a nine by sixteen deck. And his, you know, original calculations would make sense under what he saw, but based on the photo evidence we have here is we've got the cabin main floor, ten by twenty-four, and then we get the cabin ground floor, ten by twenty-four, and then we have that enclosed area under the deck, you know, nine by twenty-four as well, for a total of pre-existing six hundred and ninety-six square feet. So hopefully by seeing some of these new photos, you can see that there was significantly more enclosed area of this non-conforming structure. So if we got to six ninety-six and the thirty percent administrative variance gives another two hundred and eight, gets us to about nine hundred and four square feet in the, in the setback area here.
What are you trying to get to?
Nine, nine hundred is, ish, is, is what Mr. Burke is really trying to do. And I'll show you some designs here in a second of what he's trying to do and what this would accomplish. So, yeah, a recognition per the staff report, for our request in the staff report of six hundred and ninety-six square feet as the previous non-conforming bulk and area would do it. And again, these are the, the enclosed areas that we're trying to at least show you evidence that it did exist. This is another, you know, photo showing the enclosed area under the deck. You can see it's the full length of the deck there. There are water heaters and other, you know, components in that deck. Getting back to this, this, what's the point here, that, you know, you can see this, this driveway where the, the truck is parked there. Kind of want to get a floor up to almost level with that tape that he's pulling, so he can actually pull off that driveway and, and get off the driveway and and the comments about the original building location permit, there's been a whole new redesign based on the hope that, and the assumption we can, we could recognize that original, you know, non-conforming area. And this is sort of what's supposed to, to be constructed in that. And what that would do is that would just level it up with the, the driveway there you can see in this area. And no, no further encroachment towards the lake and effectively get Mr. Burke the ability to get his construction and engineering going out there so he could wrap this up this season. So basically what we're, we're here to describe to you and try to put on the record is that there was significantly more enclosed area in, within that, that setback prior to the structure. Enclosed area in, within that, that setback prior to the structure being destroyed. And Mr. Burke can obviously speak to you as well, if you have specific questions about the site, but yeah, what we're looking for is acknowledgement of 696 square feet of previous. Existing bulk area for, in that setback.
So at the 696, the 30% administrative variance gets you where you want to be?
Yes, sir. It's just that in the staff, the original, and I, and I had asked.
Yeah, the original had 400.
Yeah, I'd ask place out to just be a scripter's error based on the new data and, and plan director said, you know, it's probably best to bring it to you guys, so.
Okay. You have any questions for? For the owner's representative? Do you like an opportunity to speak? Okay. Sometimes you're better, it's better off not. Okay, is there anybody here in favor of this besides the applicant? Anybody neutral? Want to be neutral? No. Anybody opposed? Seeing no one, we'll close for deliberation, yeah, I don't see an issue with this, it looks like potentially it wasn't captured, probably originally by the assessor, which shocking. Because I know sometimes those, those calculations go awry. I have no problem with this, it's not moving closer to the water, there's already a couple of structures closer than that to the water, I don't see a problem here, and this is a good way to help find a solution to a little problem, so. Mr. Bradshaw?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion.
All right, I live to approve this project file VA zero zero one four dash two one. A 30% increase of bulk for a previously existing structure 23 feet from the average high water mark. Finding that it is in accord with Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted, this action does not result in a taking of private property.
Now we'll step down from the chair and settle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn today's hearing at 201, or 301, excuse me.